Committee, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
On the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In compliance with open meeting law, we are right now live broadcasting and recording this meeting for future broadcasts. Is anyone in the audience recording the meeting? Seeing none, I just want to let the viewing audience know that we have, I believe, looks like one member, I thought it was two, one member joining us remotely. We have Doug Gerard who's joining us via Zoom. Correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you, and you can hear us loud and clear.
Sounds good. Thank you.
So for the record, all votes today will be roll call. And at this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for all those who serve in the military and for all those who protect us. Thank you. Sarah, could we please have a roll call?
Mayor View?
Here.
Mr. Wagner?
Here.
Mr. Barcello?
Present.
Mr. Douth?
Here.
Mrs. Perret?
Present.
Mrs. Schofield?
Here.
Mr. Shumsky?
Here.
Mr. Lamoth?
Here.
Mr. Gerard?
Present.
Mr. Bernard? Mrs. Loebz?
Present.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven present, one absent.
Thank you, Sarah. Public announcements by committee members. I'll start to my left with Vice Chair Susan Zatella-Lopes. All set? Don Lamoth?
All set for now.
Grace Schofield?
All set.
Sam Shumsky?
Yes, I just wanted to let the public know that I did do some meetings recently with regards to the junior ROTC.
Sam, could you just talk a little closer?
Yeah. So I did meet with our junior ROTC at Chickaby High on the 12th, and we did talk about possibly, I know Assistant Superintendent Carol Cruiser was on the meeting. We had a very productive conversation in regards to how we can possibly improve upon the program in regards to making Westover and Chickaby High more aligned to each other in regards to maybe jerseys, including Westover on that. And I also did get a chance to meet with the Chickaby High Booster Soccer Club last night. We had a very productive conversation in regards to hearing thoughts on electronic ticketing, our recent policy that we passed, and how we can improve upon that as well. So I look forward to working with everyone on that, and thank you.
Thank you. Chet Zatella?
Yes. I'm all set.
All set.
Thank you.
Sandra Perret?
Good evening. Just a reminder to the public that there is an education subcommittee of the City Council on September 28th at 6:30 here in City Hall, and the particular meeting room has not been determined at this time, but everyone is invited.
Thank you, and I apologize I missed Doug Gerard who's joining us remote. Doug?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I would just like to take a moment to offer up condolences to the Michon family. We all knew John very well. He passed away recently at the age of 86. He was instrumental in raising funds for many, many years for the Friends at the Library, and I just thought we should bring him up tonight, and he will be missed. Also, to echo my colleague, Mr. Shumsky, with the ticketing, electronic ticketing for the athletic events, if we could put on the agenda for discussion for the next meeting what we are going to be charging students for admission to these events, and it's my understanding that we're charging for some sports and we're not charging for other sports. So I would just like to have a discussion amongst the colleagues and everybody involved for the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim Wagner.
All set, Mayor. Thank you.
And Jason Douth?
I'm all set, Mayor. Thank you.
And David Barcello?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm all set.
Move on to Superintendent, public announcements.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say good evenings, everyone, and good evenings to everyone at home. I don't have any other announcements. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we'll move on to public input. Public input. Speakers shall properly identify themselves by providing their name and address. There will be a 30-minute limit for the length of the entire public input, a time of three minutes for individual speakers, and speakers are chosen on a first-come, first-served basis. Topics for discussion should be limited to those within the school committee's scope of authority. Comments and complaints regarding school personnel or students are generally prohibited unless those comments and complaints concern matters within the scope of the school committee authority. The chair of the meeting, after a warning, reserves the right to terminate speech, which is not constitutionally protected because it constitutes true threats that are likely to provoke a violent reaction and cause a breach of peace, or incitement to imminent lawless conduct, or contains obscenities. Questions asked by the public may be referred to the committee or administrative staff for consideration in later response. We have two people signed up for public input. The first one is Lauren Garlet. Welcome, Lauren.
This makes me feel short. All right. Good evening. Nope, still. Okay, hello. So, good evening. My name is Lauren Garlet. I am a teacher at Bellamy Middle School. And then I have Claudia Palfruмен here with me also. We are here in our positions as political action leaders for the Chickaby Education Association, so we're going to be speaking on the same matter. We're just kind of dividing up the speaking. So, good evening. Dear members of the Chickaby School Committee, Mayor View, and other members of the Chickaby community, we are here to inform you about an MTA ballot initiative for 2024. MCAS started with the best of intentions and became a high stakes, high cost to the tune of about $30 million a year measurement of a district's progress. It is the opinion of many that the MCAS has become punitive rather than informative. The use of a single high-stakes test to evaluate students, promote or graduate students, and judge a school or district's standing has proven to have negative impacts, including the denial of diplomas to some groups of students, undue stress on students and staff, and a, this thing moves, and a loss of time on learning. The goal of public education is to teach students to be critical thinkers, engaged citizens, and lifelong learners. We don't feel that MCAS is helping us achieve those goals.
So the Thrive Act will address these issues by replacing the MCAS graduation requirement with one that allows students to certify that they have satisfactorily completed coursework showing mastery of the skills, competencies, and knowledge required by the state's standards. It will eliminate state receiverships and reinstating a democratic control to committees and school committees. We know once the state comes in, they sometimes don't leave. It will establish a commission to create a new whole-child system of assessing our schools, building on important experiments in our state and nation, which can be implemented in upcoming years. Passing the Thrive Act will mean that schools and district evaluation and accountability requirements will focus on supporting locally fed, sorry, locally-led school improvement plans while still aligning with federal law. Student learning and assessment will be reorientated in a developmentally appropriate way that educates and supports the whole child, and the 30-year experiment with test, punish, and privatize will end, and students, communities, and true learning will be placed front and center.
Excuse me. So in closing, we ask that the Chickaby School Committee and other registered voters in Massachusetts, in Massachusetts, join us in support of the Thrive Act so that we can provide a useful and real-world education that better supports our students and carries them into adulthood. If you see MTA members collecting signatures, please, if you so choose, please take a minute to consider to sign the ballot petition to get the question on the ballot for 2024. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. So we did have Claudia Palfrumen. Claudia, did you want to add anything else for your time, or?
No, I'm fine. It's Palfrumen, and I am the teacher librarian.
Palfrumen, I'm sorry.
Palfrumen, good old English name, Palfrumen. And I am the librarian at DuPont Middle School.
Thank you.
I forgot to tell you that. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. That concludes public input. We'll move on to visitors. We have three, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Dr. Ware.
So at this time, Mr. Mayor, we do have three visitors. What I'd like to ask the school committee is if we can ask, have Mr. Scott Chapten Lane go first in the order of presentations, followed by Mr. Stephen Sakowski, and then myself, if that would please the committee.
Can I get a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to take one of our three visitors out of order this evening. I ask that Mr. Chapten, Chapten Lane be allowed to vote first, speak first, please.
Thank you. Any discussion, Don?
Yes, from what I heard from Dr. Ware is he'd like to rearrange everything and put himself at the bottom of the pile, so.
Correct.
It would be Scott, and then it would be the Human Resource Department, and then?
Yeah, that would be the order, Don. If we take Scott. Just a point of reference, if we take Scott first, Stephen would be next, and Dr. Ware, that's the order.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? We need to take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. Welcome, I'm on me. We'll welcome Scott Chapten Lane, the Director of Maintenance, for an update on school facilities and summer projects.
Hello, everyone. I'm Scott Chapten Lane, Director of Maintenance. I just wanted to go over a few things. If everyone can, first of all, thank you for having me here. I love coming to speak about all the great things we've done over the summer. You know, one thing I always laugh about is, you know, we do a big thing about the summer projects, but our crew does work, and we have a lot of projects that are all year long. The summer is, you know, a lot more get done, but, you know, all year long, we're doing major, major projects. If we can hold off the questions to the end, I can kind of get through it, and then it'll give me more time to answer questions, if that's okay with everyone. I sent around the summer project list, and with 85 things listed, I'm not going to go through every one of them, but at the end, if people have questions of why it became a fall project, or if it's in progress, or not, or it's completed, I will answer those after I get through the presentation. So, I never used this clicker before. Okay. So, facilities, summer, facilities update and summer project update. So, I wanted to go over a couple of major jobs that are in the works. The gymnasium cafeteria air handler project, that's something we've been working on for a while. We did pick owner-project manager, and we have an architect that has been chosen. We are negotiating pricing with the architect next week. The maintenance warehouse project, same thing, same actual owner-project manager and same architect that took the project, and we're meeting with them. They actually started preliminary designs of the maintenance warehouse, and we're going over all the documents on that. The CH turf light project, as I wrote on here, the contractor doing the job and my department didn't feel we were getting the best buck for what they were trying to do. They proposed a very high extra. We didn't think it was fair of what was done, and we dropped the contract, and we're starting off fresh again, removing all the work that was done, and going out to rebid. So, there's a little delay on that, or a big delay on that. It's been a while, but it took a long time to work out, especially working around the weather and working around all of our seasons, because we tried to make it so we didn't affect any of the sports. I think we should realize that if we go out to bid with, for the project, we should say doubling up sports at one of the turf fields and not try to close, just get the project done and not wait till the summer. But we can talk about that with the school committee when it gets closer. Berry school classrooms, I put that on here because after meeting several times with Dr. Ware, it has, not that it hasn't been apparent already, but I've got my picking orders here, that classroom AC is a major project, and we want to see progress on it. So, I sat down with my team, we came up with a plan. I know we are getting a new Berry school. It's going to be a little while down the pipeline, but I still think we have to address the issue of not having classroom AC there, and I plan on spending some money on portable air conditioners and getting the electrical wiring in and putting portables there. And when the building, when we do get the new building, we can use those portables throughout the district when we have any issues. Bellamy classroom AC univent replacement, we did meet with an engineer. We have all the paperwork done. I'm planning on getting that out to bid beginning October for a next summer project. Litwin classrooms, that, that ended up being a little different than the Bellamy classrooms. We couldn't do the same engineering. We planned for Bellamy, the univents are a little different. So, we're coming up with a different plan for that, but same thing, we're pushing for a summer project. Fairview classroom AC, after meeting with Dr. Ware and talking to my staff, I have a lot of staff that have shown interest now that we made it such a priority to get the air conditioning going, that they're going to start working weekends, nights and weekends, try to get some more air conditioning done at Fairview. Same thing at Stephannic, and this number has actually gone up in the last week because we met the principal, Theryal. She gave us an open classroom to jump in right away, right after COVID. All the kids were spread out, so we didn't have an open classroom to work in at a lot of the schools. But right now, it seems our numbers, don't quote me on this, but I think our numbers are down a little. So, we have an open classroom to work in. That's going to speed up that process. Major projects, I just want to go over some of the major projects that are coming up. It's going, ongoing right now, comp emergency detention area repair is underway. It's with a 30-day completion date of 9:30. We had a detention area that wasn't properly built, we believe, from the documents we found and from what we saw in place, and we lost the detention area there. So, we have to do an emergency repair, and it's on schedule, and we should be done by the end of September. We also found, while that, doing that comp emergency detention repair, we found an area of a retaining wall in that wetland area that needs to be repaired. I haven't got a price on that, but that will be a spring project. Comp replacement track surface, we met with an engineer. We're starting to get the geotechnical testing done right now, and we'll be going out to bid for that for the summer. Replace comp energy management system, same thing, getting an engineer involved, going out to bid. We did comps gym floor this summer. We couldn't get them both done because of the amount of summer school and athletic programs we had going in the summer. So, we plan on doing Chickaby High soon. That's a full sand of the floors, sanding it down to bare wood, adding new lines, and then recoding it. It came out great. We're hoping Chickaby High will come out the same. Chickaby High replacement track, I think we'll try to do Chickaby High before we do comp, but it may be the, all, all on the same summer, depending on what we have scheduled for the track. Same thing with Chickaby High, replace the energy management system. Bowe School parking lot, we put trap rock in. That seemed to help, but we have to do a full pavement back there with drainage. The DPW was, the engineering department of the city was excellent. It took them a little while because they're shorthanded, but they prepared all the bid documents for us, so we're ready to go out to bid for that. We just need to figure out where the money's coming from for that project. Bowie parking, Bowie parking lot, that was something the principal put on his wish list. We looked into it, and it really wasn't put in correctly. All the water kind of washes out into the playground area. We can't have it that way. There was no really water detention that was put in. So, that's another thing that we'll have to hire an engineer, do a sprack review on it, figure out where the water's going to go, and then repave it. Zatella, front parking lot, same thing. We put in trap rock, but I think it's time where we make that into pavement. I added this on at the last minute with the Bowie playground repair, because I know that's coming up on the 28th. But there was a slide that needs, well, let me first off by saying, several of our playgrounds were put in a long time ago. That Bowie playground, if I'm right, I believe it was installed like 1999, because I was involved in installing that. A lot of our playgrounds are that age. They need to be replaced, entire playgrounds. A lot of, the problem with the Bowie playground is we had a broken slide. No one would replace the slide. We couldn't get a replacement. They were talking about a custom slide. So, after meeting with several organizations, we did find someone, a manufacturer that has a slide that will mount up that unit. So, we did order it. It should be in the next couple of weeks. We installed new wood chips, and we cleaned up as much as we could in that area. And I just want to go over a couple of things, just, just to kind of show you some of the stuff we did this summer. So, Stephannic, the rug at Stephannic was in poor shape. The lights still had fluorescent lights. So, on the principal's wish list was removed the carpet that was in there. So, the carpet was, the building was built in 1970. I'd say the carpet was actually from the 80s. So, we stripped the whole place. We brought it back down to pavement. We had a rug installation company come in. We put new rug. We put new LED lighting throughout the whole entire facility, new rug throughout. This is Fairview Computer Lab. This is a computer lab, and it's not really functional anymore. It was, you know, that was built in 1995. The principal wanted to turn this into a steam lab. So, there was all electrical and internet that went through those floors. So, we had to get into the room underneath, bust it all out, tie it back, back to the source, and then we busted it all out, refinished the room. Now, it's a beautiful steam lab. Another job we had to do this summer, Chickaby High Cosmetology Lab build. So, this was originally a science room. There was really nowhere else in the building we could, without adding drastic piping throughout the system, because it's on the fourth floor. We could not just build it anywhere. We had to take over a science lab. So, this is what the science lab looks like before. This is when we turned it over to Cosmetology Lab. Bowie hallway, as you know, you can see some of those pictures. There's glue that holds the Bowie ceiling tiles when we have the warm days, even though their building's air conditioning, the hallways are air conditionings. So, they still get some heat in the hallways, although a lot of them leave their doors open, which they shouldn't. open, which they shouldn't. We have been pulling the ceiling tiles down and installing drop ceilings, you see the floor, that was, that was an abatement that was done, that was asbestos flooring. We had an abatement company come in, ground the floors down. That's what it looks like when it's, when it's done, nice bright and shiny, nice floor, washed the walls, painted where we could. That's just kind of a quick update. Open for questions.
Scott, thank you for that presentation. It looked like you were.
Looked like you were really busy with your team this summer, getting ready for the new school year. Don Lamoff.
Yes, on your major projects, I'm looking at some of the projects that you're doing, the comp retention detention area, it's an emergency repair, what did that cost?
So, the emergency repair, comp emergency repairs, $276,000 as it stands right now.
And where's that money coming from?
So, right now, it's coming out of our maintenance budget.
What's the threshold for it to become capital?
Excuse me?
What's the threshold dollar figure before it becomes capital?
I, I was never told of a threshold figure.
Because I know when we did like projects like turf on the football fields and stuff, that all had to be capital, like when we do roofs on a building, they're all capital. So, I'm looking at some of the repairs here and I'm not saying that we shouldn't do these repairs, but I don't know that they should be coming out of the education budget. And I'm not putting you on the spot here, I'm making a statement.
Well, you kind of are. So, um.
You got your boss right here.
The way, I'm sorry, what?
What? You got your boss right here, I mean, I'm not putting you on the spot.
Well, the way I see it is, when I'm asked to, if we, the first thing I'm asked is, if I have the funding, my funding in the budget to do it, that's what I was asked and I said, yes, if I have to pay for it, or if the maintenance department has to pay for it, we could pay for it. I had no, like, we couldn't wait, it was an emergency repair, so it had to happen right away. Dr. Ware and I have spoken about, you know, some of these major projects and how they, you know, we have to look at other funding sources, but that hasn't really come to play yet.
Well, like the comp detention pond, that's an emergency repair, is that the final repair?
That is not the final repair.
So, if we go further with that, it's going to cost more than the $276?
A lot more.
So, that's my point, we're going to have to.
No, I would say, on that last page that you guys have, besides the Chickaby High Gym refishing, refinishing floor, which is about $43,000, Bowie Playground, take that off, but the rest of the projects on that would probably be capital repair.
That's my point.
Yeah, no, I totally understand, yeah.
Tony Rossell?
Yes.
Sam Shumsky?
Yes, thank you Scott for all you.
Sam Shumsky.
Thank you for all you do and for all your employees do. It looks, the work you guys did over the summer looks great. So, my questions are for the CHS, the replacement of the track surface and along with their stadium. I know that, I, when I met with the Booster Club last night, they had concerns about the scoreboard, some parts of it not working, they had concerns about the bleachers over Labor Day, there was.
Mr. Shumsky, if you could please speak into the mic, I can't.
Oh, yep. There was concerns about overgrown weeds and it being taped off and regards to that. So, what are, are we going to establish policies and protocols for the beginning of the next school year so this issue does not happen again? I know it was resolved very quickly, but I just didn't know.
So, yeah, I would say I probably got six phone calls on those bleachers with the weeds underneath them. I, I would say, and I said this to a couple of people, those bleachers were never installed correctly, they have no weed fabric underneath them, they have no, nothing to stop the weeds coming up. They are very hard to weed whack because they have cross braces that go through them. So, to get someone to go through them with the weed whacker, it's, it's a daunting task. We can't use weed control at any of our schools because of our IPM programs. So, one of the things Dr. Ware and I talked about is, my plan is, we will build, we will build a new area to move one of the bleachers that's either paved, concrete, or with weed block. And we will move one of them, then we'll work on the next one, then we'll work on the next one. They were never installed correctly and we may even end up, if we do it this way, get an additional bleacher in there, the way we're going to do it.
Awesome.
Yes.
And the other question, I'm very happy to hear about the AC project becoming priority. My other question was regards, because I know we were talking about Litwin classrooms, I did hear that from teachers that there was a bee issue. I, I don't know.
Well, I'm sure everyone here who's.
I don't know if my mic's working.
I don't think you're having it close enough to, to.
Is it not close, is that better?
Much better.
Okay. So, another issue.
What kind of issue?
A bee issue. There was bee, so teachers.
Bumble or honey?
No, the, I don't know.
Like hornets, hornets.
They've had to evacuate classrooms because of bees flying into them.
So, I don't mean to smile when I say this, but it's right before winter and we have this problem every year. Bees are trying to find a warm place, it's cold at night, they're trying to form a warm place. When we get the call that there's bees in a building, of course, we're not going to come during school and, and have braymen try to attack the bees while their kids are in school. So, that day when we get the call, we send braymen to take care of the issue. There are some instances, like at Litwin, we sent someone out one day, they took care of it, they found another nest in another area, and today, we had to send someone again. So, it's, it's an ongoing issue that bees are trying to find a place in all of our schools.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, any other questions? Sandra?
Just on a couple of major projects, you referred to meeting with an engineer, is that a city engineer or is that a separate contract that we're setting up?
So, I do appreciate everything the city engineers do for us, but they are shorthanded. So, although there's a cost involved when I have an outside engineer, it's a lot quicker to have an outside engineer at this point do any of these projects. So, anything that I mentioned here is an outside engineer that we would hire.
And we do a bidding process for that?
Depending on, depending on what the number is. If it's 10, if it's under 10,000 or, you know, it's three quotes. So, if I get three quotes from people and they say it's $5,000, I would go that way, it doesn't have to go out to bid.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you so much Scott for that presentation. Sure, David Barcello.
Just a quick question, Mayor. Scott, when the Bowe Parking Lot is completed, how many extra parking places do you think will be added in total?
So, I want to say it's 76 extra spaces from what there is right now. 76.
Sounds great, thank you Scott.
No problem.
Thank you. Vice Chair Susan Satella.
We're very fortunate to have you at the helm of our maintenance department, Mr. Chapdolane. Thank you for all your hard work and handling yourself with such dignity. Jimmy Stefanic would be proud of you. He's smiling from heaven.
You're going to make me cry?
Thank you.
Thank you Scott for all you do.
I just want to thank, you know, thank you guys. One thing I didn't mention is like the summer staff, you guys approve my summer staff every year. We had 36 kids this year, they all did a great job, they enjoy working for their custodians. And, you know, I wouldn't be who I am without the crew I have. My custodians are the best in any district, I wouldn't have anyone else but them. My craftsmen, they never say no, whatever I ask them to do, it gets done. My office staff is phenomenal, I can, I can not be in the office all day and stuff gets done and when I come back, I have answers. I really enjoy the job I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, Grace.
Mayor, I just have one question for Scott.
Sure Doug, I'm sorry, Grace has the floor and you're next, go ahead Grace.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, I just want to thank you again, as my colleagues have, and I'm glad you mentioned the summer project with the hiring of, I had a couple of constituents reach out at that time. Could you just describe, like, at what time of year that you hire the kids and what's the process involved in that, so that people will be aware of it?
Sure, so, I don't know if it's going to change at all because part of the funding for the summer kids is the sprint towers. And we just took a sprint tower off Dupont Roof, so we just cut that funding in half. So, it's something I haven't sat down and talked to Dr. Ware about, but we're going to have to come up with some different funding because I won't be able to hire the people I hired with half the funds. Normally, I have to know if the funding's there, if we know we have the funds. We normally wait till June before we make any decisions and make the announcement that we're going to have kids start. And we try to make it, unfortunately, we lose a lot of kids that go to other departments because we start so late, we don't start until after the 4th of July. But, over the years that we've had summer help, it's really the best time to start. It's only, they get six or seven weeks of work and it gives the custodians times to get ready for what they're going to have the kids do and get their list ready for everything for the summer. I think it works starting then, but I do know we lose kids then. So, we'll, we'll post in June, but we don't really, they won't start their job till the first full week after July 4th.
Where, where is it posted, I'm just curious?
So, it's posted on, on, in the, well, it's in-house.
Okay, okay. Thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Doug Gerard.
Thank you Mayor. Scott, I was just wondering if you could give us all an update on how we're doing with the, the back gate at Chickaby Comp, now that it's open. How is everybody, the neighbors and everybody taking, taking it?
So, so, I might turn that over to the mayor because, or Dr. Ware, because I haven't heard a word about it. I haven't heard, I've been there in the mornings, it's been very smooth. I've been there overseeing the project, I haven't seen any issues. The contractor said they haven't had any issues with traffic or anything that's going on. I haven't had one neighbor call me, but I think Dr. Ware or the mayor can answer that better.
Dr. Ware?
Yes, I can talk, I'll talk to that a little bit. So, from the school side, it actually has helped, of course. The, the staff that works there, that work there are, are saying that it's been very helpful. I have to give a shout out to the Chickaby Police Department because they've been very instrumental in helping regulate the traffic. I do know that there are neighbors on the side streets who are concerned about the buses that park on the narrow, narrow streets in their neighborhoods. So, that is something that I know was brought to our transportation director and that we're talking to Five Star to see if there's something that can be done about it. But that is the, one of the complaints I have heard about it, out of concerns. Other than that, when I speak with the principal, Mr. Andrew Lamoff, I haven't heard any other pieces of feedback that needs to be addressed.
I agree with Doug. We've received, I think, one complaint about buses getting there early and parking and idling on secondary streets in the neighborhood. Other than that, I haven't heard any complaints. I know it's for inconvenience for about a month and I had spoken to Mr. Chapdolane right before the meeting, who told me, and I don't like jinxing a project, especially in emergency repair, but they're slightly ahead of schedule and I'm going to knock on wood. So, hopefully, they continue to be ahead of schedule. Thank you.
Thank you for the update guys.
Thank you again for your great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, at this time in school committee, Mr. Stephen Zehouski and his, the team that work in the human resources department would like to present information on our options for citywide insurance.
Good evening Mayor View, Superintendent Ware, members of the school committee. My name is Steve Zehouski, I have the honor of serving as the chief HR officer for the city and the great group of Team Chickaby folks we have, both on the school and city side that make it happen every day. I want to introduce you to Karen Gay, she's our benefits manager. She's one of our team of professionals in HR that helps to handle all of our HR processes that we do here in the city. And I know that some of you had questions tonight about our benefits packages and different pricing options and all that. So, we do have with us this evening Ms. Kathy Breton and Mark Chris Satelli, they are representatives of Hub International, who's our broker that handles all of our insurance brokerage for us for the city. And they do have a presentation for you this evening to help answer your questions.
Thank you Stephen, and good evening, school committee, Mayor View, Superintendent Ware. I do have a list of seven questions that were given to us. We did provide about five handouts that'll answer some of those questions. I just thought that, in order, I would go through each question, point to which handout answers those questions and take any additional questions that you might have. First question was, what insurance plans does the city offer and what the premiums cost on average? In front of everybody, and if it's okay, I'm going to hold up some documents, but the, probably the largest one with the most colors on it is a benchmark report. It's a four-page report that shows frankly, not only the health plans that the city of Chickaby offers, but also another 30, 35 other communities, municipalities, and school districts as well. The plans on that particular packet, what's represented on them are the most enrolled plans. So, for each city or town on this packet, the plan that the vast majority of the employees enroll on is depicted on this document. So, if you look at the first one on the left, you see City of Chickaby. The Health New England Plan is the plan that the majority of the employees at Chickaby are enrolled in, and the school department. At the top, you'll see some description of each copay and deductible. You'll notice it does say a $5,000 deductible, yet the plan has a self-insured funding of $4,500 that money is contributed to in a trust. The money is comprised of contributions from those enrolled on the plan and from the city. And those funds go into the trust and should anybody have a deductible expense, the first, well, the first $500 is the insured's responsibility, the next $4,500 for each insured becomes a responsibility of the trust and the trust does the funding of that deductible. Every other city, you can kind of compare and contrast the different deductibles and copays that each city or town has on that document. I did, just to simplify it, hold on, another smaller document, smallest one I handed out tonight. And what's on this document really is the premium for each single and each family. And we did order, these are in the order of the lowest premium. On the, on the left, you'll see ranked by city or town, the lowest single rate, and then on the right, the lowest family rate. So, currently, for the most enrolled plan for the city of Chickaby, they have the second lowest single rate from all the cities and towns that we benchmarked on this report and they have the third lowest full family rate. And again, this is for the most enrolled plan. The city does offer a total of five plans. So, in addition to this plan, they offer a PPO plan with similar deductibles and copays. They do offer two other HMO plans offered by Blue Cross Blue Shield with comparable coverage to the plan offered by Health New England where the majority of the employees are enrolled. And then the fifth plan is a high deductible health plan and that's the least costly plan offered. That's not listed on the benchmark report, it's a very small enrollment in that plan. City of Chickaby offers that high deductible health plan for anyone that wants a very low cost plan. And most cities and towns listed on this benchmark have a comparable plan that they offer as well. But again, most of those cities or towns that offer that plan, less than 1% of their population rolls in that plan. Question two was, what is the split between the school department and the CEA UFCW bargaining units? Also listed on that large benchmark report, I do have a list of the splits. So, for the city of Chickaby, the city pays 70% of a single rate and they pay 60% of a family rate on four of the HMO plans that are offered. On the PPO plan that's offered, which again, we have, we don't have a very significant enrollment in that PPO plan, but that is a 50/50 contribution rate. So, for the most enrolled plan, the city pays 70% of the single rate and 60% of the family rate. Question three, what plans are the other gateway cities in the four western counties and what do the premiums cost on average? Listed in this benchmark report, we do have those four gateway cities, that would include Springfield, Westfield, Holyoke, and Pittsfield. And all of those communities are represented on the first two reports that we just reviewed. As far as what the premiums cost on average, you can look, you know, again, probably the easier way to look at would be to find those cities on this document right here. The only city that we have currently that's lower, well, there's two, lower than Chickaby. One is Westfield, which is a customer of Hub International, and the other is Holyoke, only on the family rate for Holyoke. The other Springfield and Pittsfield's rates are, are higher. Next question, what is the split between those school departments and the teachers? So, for each of those gateway. So for each of those gateway cities, City of Pittsfield, it's an 80-20 split on their most enrolled plan. For Holyoke, it is a 71 and 1/2% and 28 and 1/2% split for the single rate. And on the family in Holyoke, for the most enrolled plan, it's 67 and 1/2% for family, and then those families would pay 22 and 1/2% at Holyoke. In Springfield, I'm not quite sure what Springfield's is, so I did not list what, yes?
You keep saying Springfield, but I can't find them on here. I see-
Springfield is listed, yeah. So thank you for bringing that up. Springfield, a number of years ago, was forced into the GIC plan. So Springfield's in the GIC.
Okay.
So, yes. The GIC is the state plan. It's the Group Insurance Commission. It's what the state employees are offered, and there's a number of municipalities that entered that. Springfield really didn't have a choice when they were put in that. They were forced to go into that plan. And the GIC offers a lot of different plan designs and a lot of different carriers. But what we listed here in the benchmark report is the most enrolled plan. Next question, what does the GIC plans are and what do the premiums cost on the coverage? We didn't list out all the plan designs for the GIC, other than the most enrolled plan. As far as the premiums for their plans, we did hand out a separate document, but the upper left-hand side, it says the GIC history. And you can see for each year what the plans were and what the rates were. If you look in the lower left-hand corner, you'll see for 2023, four of their most enrolled plans and what the premiums are for each of those respective plans. For ease of comparison, on that same document, in the upper right-hand side, I put down the five plans and what the premiums are for those plans that the City of Chicopee offers. If you look at the average rate increases for the GIC, they're pretty comparable to what the average rate increases have been for the City of Chicopee over the past seven or eight-year span. The next question was, what is the cost, what is the cost split for those plans with the GIC? It really depends on each municipality that would join the GIC. It's up to that municipality with the cost split. The state does not dictate what the cost splits are. As far as what the state does, I think it's an 80-20 split for the state, but, no?
80-20 is if you were grandfathered in-
75-25 for the rest?
Yes.
Thank you. So 80-20 for those grandfathered, 75-25 for the rest. As far as each respective municipality that joins the GIC, their rates are set, their cost splits are set by each of those separate municipalities. What is the, next question is, what would it cost the Chicopee School Committee, City of Chicopee, to cover 60 or 65% of the cost of the medical life insurance for the CEA and UFSW bargaining units rather than the current 50%? When we got that question, the only plan that's covered at 50% is the PPO plan. So we did run some numbers as to what the increase in expenditure would be if you increased that contribution for the PPO plan. There is a document at the top, in the top of the document, it states estimate of increased costs, if the medical cost, if the city increased contributions to the PPO plan from 50% to 60% or 65%. So we did list that out as to what that contribution increase would be, just for the city's portion. So if the city were to increase their contribution from 50% to 60%, it would increase the city's contribution by approximately $65,662. If the city were to increase their contribution on that PPO plan from 50% to 65%, that number would be $98,494.20 to the city's budget. The other plan that the city offers that's covered at 50% is the life insurance plan. So we estimated for the school what the increase cost would be, and that would be if the city were to increase a contribution from 50% to 60%, it would cost the city an additional $13,200 per year. And if the city increased its contribution on the life insurance from 50% to 65%, it would increase the approximate cost to about $19,800 to the city's budget. Yes, Mayor?
Yeah, Mark, how many enrollees do you have in that particular plan? Do you know?
I'm gonna estimate with Kathy's help.
53.
Yep.
So the majority of our employees citywide, whether it be-
34 in the PPO?
34.
Got it.
So of our roughly-
Over 1,000. You have about-
1,800 employees, roughly?
Yes.
Most, the majority are in the Health New England Plan?
Correct.
Which is a 70-30 split for singles and a 60-40 split for-
That's correct, Mayor.
Okay.
And then, actually, that is the last question. So if maybe I, if I could open it up, if there were any additional questions on, that's a lot of information I threw at you, but if there's any other additional questions that you have now, I can answer them now, or if you'd like to get them to us through the Human Resources Department, we can get the answers to you.
So, Mark, I have one question. How does the city compare Commonwealth-wise with other municipalities for our total premium?
I mean, very well. So you're in the, you know, depending on the year, you're usually in the top three as far as lowest cost for the level of coverage that you offer. I'd like to, you know, claim that it's all our hard work that gets that cost down and you're negotiating. But, you know, part of it is the claims experience. Ultimately, the claims experience are gonna help determine what the costs are. So you'll notice on that first, that document I gave out that showed the different rates for each city or town. Westfield is by far the lowest. Two reasons. One, they've had a miraculously good run at good claims experience, so they've been very healthy. And then, two, they've run so well over the years that they're actually subsidizing their plan a little bit. So they're really operating a bit at a loss right now. So the rates aren't covering their expenses.
Thank you. And just, I think it's really important to mention that the city has been, first, as mayor, my goal is to always try to find creative ways to put more money in people's paychecks. It's not how much you make, it's how much you take home.
Right.
And on that note, we've been looking at heading towards more and more being self-insured. Could you just explain a little bit-
Sure.
-that history about how the city pays the deductible contribution of an employee versus-
Yep. So about six years ago, your plan simply had a $500 deductible. So the most enrolled plan's had a $500 deductible that applied to some services. Well, as we were getting rate increases, you know, mostly based on claims experience, we would increase that deductible. We've increased it three or four times. So we went from what we have is a $500 deductible, and there was no self-insuring. We went to a $1,000 deductible and stuck our toes in the water of self-insuring. Then we went to a $2,000 deductible, and now we're up to a $5,000 deductible. So the city and the employees self-insure part of their deductible. They self-insure 4,500 of that $5,000 deductible through the trust that's set up. And for a family, they self-insure 9,000 of a $10,000 family deductible for that plan. To the employees on the plan, they're paying 500. And for people that don't have any deductible expenses, the trust isn't paying anything. For those that have at least $5,000 of deductible expense, the trust is paying $4,500 of that. We've worked with the carriers and tried to increase that deductible on their fully insured platform. We're kind of at their ceiling right now. They need to file different plans with the state to get them approved for us to keep moving up. Each and every year, we look at a, I'm gonna call it a complete self-insured plan. Nobody's, I have one client that's a Berkshire Hathaway company that's completely self-insured. Most clients that say they're self-insured, they have a level of insurance. They might have $100,000 deductible or a $200,000 deductible. To the employees, it's still the traditional plan. The employee's responsibility is a $500 deductible. But the higher we go up, the more risk we have and the more deductible expense that we would self-insure. But it might get to the point where that might be a better solution than what we're on now, and each and every year we look at that.
Mark, I just had one more thought that I wanted just the general audience and everyone to hear. The total premiums paid annually, the city's contribution is roughly $15 million. And what is the employee's contribution for, again, just total premium for health insurance for a year?
I mean, I would say, I think the city's contribution's more than 15 million. I could be wrong, but I think the total budget between the active employees, the retired, early retiree employees, the retired employees, the dental plan, the life insurance, I think we're closer to like 25 million.
25.
And I'm guessing that the city's contribution's around 18 or 19 million, and the balance is the employees. Could be 17 million. I don't have those numbers committed to memory, but I'm in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any questions from the School Committee members? Don Lumoth?
Yes. What we hear in negotiations a lot of times is they'd like to up the percentage in the insurance. And I see you took the time to up the PPO from 50 to 60 to 65-
Right.
-with 34 employees. I'm not worried about that one.
No.
What I'm worried about is the most enrolled, the HNE. To raise that from 60 for a family to 70 for a family, what would that cost? And I don't expect you to have it off the top.
Yeah, if you don't hold me to the number, I'll give you a pretty good estimate right now. So if we were to raise just the family from 60% to 70%, and again, this is, if I had the full document here, I could give you that number, in excess of $1 million.
And another question that gets asked quite often is, we tried to go with this once, and it cost the, the premiums went up so much that they got pushed back out. It was a one-plus.
No, and that's a great question. So whether you're a self-insured plan, more self-insured than you are now, or completely fully insured, you didn't have that trust, your premium is set on claims, okay? So let's just say that your plan for the active people on these health, these five different plans, let's just say the premium for the health plan, the actives and the early retirees, for argument's sake, let's say it's $20 million, okay? And for $20 million a premium, the carriers hope to pay out something less than 20 million, okay? All of a sudden, if you changed your single and family rate to a single and employee plus one and a full family rate, we're still gonna need $20 million, right, to help, because the claims aren't gonna change.
Right.
So if the expenses aren't gonna change, they still need the same end-of-the-year balance of premium. So if we go with a, if we have the single rate, that mostly won't change. To go to the employee plus one rate, we would have to raise the full family rate, not we, but the insurance companies, quite a bit, to make up for the premium they lose by reducing the premium for the employee plus one. So it can be done. We do have other communities that have done it. It is painful for the full families. Typically, the process is, you know, if this gets, you know, put to a vote by a PEC, and I'll just make up numbers, let's say we have 100 employee plus ones and 500 full families, and you put it to a vote, do the 500 full families want their rates to go up so the employee, the 100 employee plus one rates could go down? And typically, when you get to that process, yeah, that's, usually it's hard to make it happen.
So the question that I asked first is, what would it cost the city to go from 60 to 7% for family? And I don't expect you to have the number, but-
I'll get the number. I can have the number tomorrow, but I'm thinking it's in the neighborhood of a million dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Sure.
Tim Wagner?
Thank you, Mayor. And I just want to thank all of our HR staff and our insurance brokers for coming out tonight. This was put on at my request. I just sort of wanted to get a look at, really a comprehensive look at what the, what the insurance plans are, what they offer, what the splits are, what the premiums are, et cetera. I'm 20 years old. I'm not gonna pretend like I understood all of this, for as much as I do understand about public policy. And there's, there's gonna be some homework that I have to do here before I'm ready to ask more questions, but I just wanted to thank all of you for coming out. It's a really comprehensive presentation that you presented to us. You guys do some really good work. And if I have any questions, Mayor, I'll submit them to you and to the HR Director, but thank you once again.
Yep. Happy to talk anytime.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation.
Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Thank you.
Can we introduce him? Our next visitor.
Motion to postpone the visitor's presentation?
No, Don, we're not doing that.
Just kidding, Mark.
Our next presenter is Dr. Marcus Ware, our Superintendent of Schools, who's going to talk about the student's entry plan. And I'm excited to hear the plan, Doctor. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening once again, everyone. Good to see you. And I hope it's my entry plan, the superintendent's entry plan. And so, like many superintendents, when they're new to district, you want to see what their plan of action is. So usually, the plan takes place within the first 90 days. I'm happy to say I'm at day 82. So we're gonna, this plan is for about the first 180 days. So the first six months, roughly. For those of you who have been around, you know I started July 1st. So I hit the ground running. So this plan is gonna take you from my early days when I came as a visitor in June, and then I officially took over in July 1st. On this page is the introduction. Most entry plans start with that. This is the information that I gathered as an interviewee, as well as a person who was first interested in this Chicopee Public Schools. And so I did my homework, and I basically was researching what Chicopee is all about. So if you, I'm not gonna make you read through it. This is your copy. This will also be posted, so the public can actually view it. The Chicopee Public Schools comprises of 15 schools. I'm happy to be the leader of all of them. And we have great partnerships. We have partnerships with the Boys and Girls Club. We have partnerships with Holyoke Community College, Riverview Valley Council, and the list keeps going on. Major colleges and universities that we're very proud to have. And we also talk about some of the challenges that we face here in Chicopee. So over the past few years, we've had some setbacks when it's come to the pandemic, more specifically COVID. However, we are charged as superintendents to charge forth and make sure that students are having academic success. So what you'll see here is talking about the status of Chicopee High School, which currently receives the statewide system of supports, which is also known as SSOS. And so what that looks like is a support system from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, DESI, in which we work with a team to work out specific supports for students who are not receiving academic success, specifically in our high schools, and, well, and, excuse me, Chicopee High School. From there, you also will see that I took feedback from my interview days. And from that interview process, I remember what the School Committee asked me. They asked me a bunch of things, and one of the things was, how am I am about preparing a budget? And so I remembered that when I was an interviewee, and I brought my experience from my previous districts here, and I heard the School Committee members when they said they wanted more transparency. So that is something that I noted here in the introduction. As well as just in this quick summary, Mr. Chapdolane did a fantastic job this evening expressing about the needs of our facilities, more specifically, the air conditioning needs, as well as other buildings that we're looking to bring online, so we can absorb some of our flow over, I would call, or overflow, as well as some exciting projects like the Anna Berry Elementary School project. So we're really excited about that. And then, what you'll see at the end of this first page is just talking about what an entry plan actually is, even though I summarized it already. So once again, this is an entry plan that talks about my first 180 days here in district. On the next page, you'll see every entry plan usually starts with a framework. And for me, it was important to use the framework I'm familiar with, which is Bowman and Deal, reframing organizations. As I stepped foot into this position, I wanted to look through a certain lens and come in without a game plan, meaning, let me just look around and see what I learn. I meet with people, and I try to figure out, how do we do business here in the city of Chickapi when it comes to the school, school district? The second frame is under the human resources frame, and even though we had a fantastic presentation from human resources this evening, it's just that. How do we take care of our people? How do we take care of the staff? How do we show up for all over a thousand of our employees in the school district? And basically, just how we support them? The next frame is the political frame, which basically talks about the coalitions. How do we work together? How do we actually talk about our differences and settle on what's best for our students so we can move the needle on achievement? And lastly, the symbolic frame, and this is about the cultural references, what Chickapi is known for, what our pride stands for, what are we about? And so some of those celebrations, as well as the vision, the mission, and the core values of Chickapi Public Schools. So as you look at this framework, please, as I get into the, in a moment, I'll get into the listen and learn functions, and that is derived from this framework, and I will reference it as necessary. On this page, the superintendent usually starts with their core value beliefs. So these are my beliefs. So if you talk to me, I'm looking at some of the CEA members, they probably heard me say this, and I know my team hears me say this, I believe that all Chickapi students can learn. So if you ever talk to me and you say they can't, you're talking to the wrong person. And so I also, some of my core beliefs are about curriculum, it must meet the needs of our students. Technology, we have to integrate it all the way across the curriculum. Addressing social emotional needs, that is key. We address the whole student, not just parts of a student. Teachers must be provided professional development opportunities and the chance to pursue them often. Even though it says teachers here, I want to be very clear that it's not just about teachers, about any instructional adult we put in front of our kids. Schools must build and have an ongoing positive relationship with the greater community. Without this, schools cannot thrive. Schools are a reflection of the community. So who our students are, forty-one percent Hispanic, forty-eight percent white, roughly four percent black, roughly two to four percent Pacific Islander Native American. So these are our students. So how do we interact with them? How do we welcome them into our classrooms? How do we welcome them to our buildings? And lastly, we have to be fiscally responsible, again, going back to that budget component. A theory of action talks about if-then statements. It goes to the statement, if you're any math people in the room, it's like a contrapositive, if-then. So if we do these things, then we should see these results. More specifically, if we ensure high-quality culturally relevant instruction in every classroom, strong hiring practices, high levels of support for teachers, strong accountability practice based on data, courageous leadership, and effective engagement with families and the community, then student achievement will improve, more students will perform at or above grade level, and achievement gaps will improve or disappear. That is what I believe. And furthermore, there are two subcomponents from it. Again, speaking to the social emotional component, if we address students' social emotional as a whole, we also will help students have access to curriculum and therefore have student success, achievement, excuse me, academic achievement. Lastly, if teachers take the responsibility for their own ongoing learning, then we are able to continuously update teaching and learning practices so that our students have the best environment possible. Once again, these are things that I espouse. On the next page, you will see that we have what we call the listen and learn actions. What does it look like when the superintendent walks into the building? What does it look like when he walks into Dulong? What does it look like when I walk in with a team or have a meeting with the CEA, meeting with my E-team, meeting with the Boys and Girls Club? These are the lenses that I look through, and I'm trying to gather information so I can make some moves when I present to you the information, once I'm finished collecting it, in the month around January, January twenty twenty-four. The first goal falls under teaching and learning. And if you notice in the right-hand corner, there's a little capital S and a lowercase t. Again, going back to that framework, that's under the structural frame, meaning, how do we do business? So under Goal One, these are the actions that I plan to take. Either I've already started doing it, I haven't done it yet, or it's going to be ongoing. Just for, as a frame of reference, on the left side, each goal, I mean, each subcategory under Goal One is listed from A through F, as well as, then you have an example of, one of my goals is to examine the curricular documents to assess alignment with state standards and twenty-first century skills. So what you'll see to the right of that, there's a nice graphic that shows between July and December. That means, since I've been here since July one, I've already started doing that work, whether it's with coaches, whether it's with Ms. Belleville, or anyone in between. I've started doing that work, and I'm collecting information so I can present to you when I meet with you in January. You'll see this replicated all the way down Goal One, and I'm just going to hit some of the points so that the public at home and people in the audience who do not have something in their hands can hear me and can understand where I'm at. Another goal is to observe classroom instruction to, of teachers to develop understanding of practices. Meet with central office administrators, building administrators, teachers to learn the history of and ask for their evaluation of curriculum documents, communication of instructional expectations, and professional supports. And as you keep going, you notice that this all falls under the teaching and learning category, basically what's happening in our classrooms, okay? And so the last one, each goal ends with a devise of report of the findings and presented to the school committee at the end of one hundred and eighty days. My goal is to have a comprehensive report for you at the end of one hundred and eighty days, which is roughly December, January, depending on how the vacations fall. On the next page is Goal Two, organizational structures. The Bowman and Deal frames that we looked through are structural, human resources is symbolic. So you may notice here that I'm looking at supervisors of our departments in our school. I'm talking about you all, the school committee. You remember, we had a meet and greet. Remember that I said I have an open door policy that has been met on several occasions, and many of you have reached out with your, with your thoughts and your concerns. This is something I would love to, I can't wait to get to, whole group sessions. That means holding group sessions with parents. What are our parents thinking? Holding group sessions with the paras. What are our parents saying? Holding group sessions with the custodians. What are they saying? So all of our stakeholders. So that word stakeholders encapsulates all of the people who work in the Chickapi Public Schools, as well as, very specifically, I want to hone in here, MTSS, which stands for multiple tier systems of supports. How do we set up our classroom, all the way to how we intervene with our students who need the help, all the way to how we support them outside the classroom if we pull them out? So that's something that I come with a great wealth of knowledge in, and I'm ready to learn about what does that look like in science? What does that look like in social studies? But also, you may know, MTSS is also referred to when we come to special education or English language learning education and everything in between. However, I believe in all students are a product from MTSS, not just the students in their specialized populations. And once again, we have one hundred and eighty days from the July first start that I anticipate that I'll be presenting my findings. Goal number three, community partnerships. Community partnerships I believe in. So what does that look like? I named some of them already, but I plan on going into the community. I will highlight here, Mr. Mayor has invited me to the neighborhood meetings. That's one way of understanding community partnerships. Another way is actually going into the community, where if you live in a specific ward, where's the hangout spot? Where are parents going? So that they don't have to come to me, I go to them. So I look forward to making those meetings and making them publicly known, so parents and other people, other caretakers can attend those events. PTO meetings, some PTOs from schools have already reached out to me and asked me about trunk or tree. Sorry, I'm not a big Halloween fan, but I'm going to work on it. But trunk or tree and things of that nature are another way to get to know the PTO, and those individuals support our kids in that way. But also, meeting with city officials. I know I was just in the dunk tank a couple of weeks ago, meeting with the Chickapi Police and Fire Department. My toe has healed nicely. And so there's other opportunities where, meeting with the city officials, I get to learn the workings of the city, as well as, I speak with our neighboring superintendents. I'm in a text chain with Mr. Dan Warwick from Springfield Public Schools, as well as Mr. Anthony Soto from Hoeyo Public Schools, and I'm learning about how we do business as a collaborative. A lot of our students go to each other's districts, so it's a lot, it's been a great learning curve. Invite this school committee members out for a formal meet and greet. Some of you already know that. I like to eat. I like to enjoy a good meal. So some of you have taken me up on this, and I, if you haven't, please get ahold of me, we can still arrange something. As well as engage in regular communication. That's something about my bi-weekly reports, where I try to keep you updated on things that are going on, as well as, like yesterday, when we had a special situation, you got updated in my absence because I was out of district, but my team stepped in and kept you alerted on information that you would probably learn from the media if you, if you were paying attention to the media yesterday. I'm going to turn to page to Goal Number Four, district infrastructures. This is touring all the buildings. Scott and I are going to have a really good time when we go through and talk about touring our buildings. We've done it in bits and pieces, but I'm looking forward to all of them, as well as, I've already started to learn about the upgrades, as you heard today in his report, as well as look at the student data trends. I know that Scott was on the call with me with the MSBA today, in which we were looking at the data trends about students who have passed through our doors, and looking at just the growth trends of students in grades K through twelve, and how would that look like for the next five years or so. As well as looking at all side audits. I'm a strong believer in bringing someone who has an impartial view to actually give us some feedback about how we do business. And one of those things that I would like to focus on is around our processes in Dulong, as well as security. So I'm looking forward to seeing what those, what those audits yield as far as information. And then, as well as, I speak, Scott and I have standing appointments where he actually lets me know his concerns, and we actually map out a plan, so we can attack things, as you heard again this evening. And finally, Goal Number Five, fiscal management and resources. Mr. Meyer Recky, as well as Ms. Green, human resources and our budget director, know that I will walk down the hallway in a heartbeat if I need to understand something. So those meetings have already started, where I'm trying to understand how those systems work with each other, how they work with the city, and how we can clean up business, as well as review the budget management for the past couple of decades. There's, there's a lot of conversation that I've inherited as the new superintendent about how things used to be done. This is how we got here. And I will say, I think that some of those things are true. However, there's some other things that I'm learning that I, once I finalize everything, I think it will be great for the committee to know, because, like I said to my financial, my finance budget director, Mr. Meyer Recky, I want to make sure that you have a transparent budget, where you understand where the money's going. Research other districts to understand how we do a cost benefit analysis here in our district, as well as meeting with Mr. Therio, who's over our grants, to understand what monies we can apply for and how we can use them, and review our staffing structures throughout our entire organization. And once again, this will be done within the next ninety or so days, totaling one hundred and eighty days. On the last page, I just go ahead and reiterate that my goal is to give you a comprehensive report about my findings in a non-judgmental way, really to talk about the next steps, which will lead to what we call a strategic plan, so that we can actually take Chickapi Public Schools to the next level, as well as soliciting your input, because your input is key, as well as soliciting input from our staff, as well as the community as a whole. At the end of that time, I will welcome any questions when I present my findings. However, I just want to let you know that I've already hit the ground running. I've actually already started tackling a lot of this information. I have multiple folders that I keep already where I've collected information, and to me, that's actually a good place to be at, you know, September twentieth. That concludes my presentation. I left time for some questions, and I'll let anyone jump in. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Ware, for that presentation. Don Lamoff?
Yes, for transparency, I've talked with the superintendent about some of these projects that I wanted to know why we're not getting to where we, I thought we would be, and he's asked me to put a monthly facilities meeting together so that he can update us on it, on the progress as we go, as opposed to pull it out of him each time. He wants, he wants us to be there. So there will be a monthly facilities meeting. I'm working out a...
Excuse me, Ms. Lamoff, would you mind speaking into the...
So I'm working out a day with Sarah.
And that's correct. I'm now speaking to the transparency. I also am accustomed to actually meeting with the facility director where I come from, as well as, that's a way to let the community know what's going on. And when you don't hear something, sometimes you can listen to the father that's out there, and it's not exactly accurate. So I think this is another way to hold ourselves accountable, as well as communicate to the public what's going on with Chickapi Public Schools.
Thank you. Approval of minutes twenty-three dash nine dash nineteen.
Move that the minutes of the regular school committee, excuse me, regular meeting of the school committee held on September sixth, twenty twenty-three be approved.
Vice Chair.
Motion to approve.
Any discussion on the minutes? Eric, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dought?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoff?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loops?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. Reports twenty-three dash nine dash twenty.
Report on personnel, action taken. At this time, Mr. Mayor, if I may add, ask Ms. Deb Green to come up for a summary of that report.
Thank you. Welcome.
Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Just a little bit about the personnel report in front of you. You have twenty-two new hires on that personnel report. Of those, four of those are teachers, three of those are paraprofessionals, and all of them range anywhere from cafeteria workers to craftsmen, custodians. And I would also like to tell you that we have at least fifteen to twenty people attending our orientations every week, so hiring is still strong for all of the various positions, again, from cafeteria workers all the way on down. As of this morning, there are ninety-four postings on school spring. Of those, twenty-six are for teachers, thirty-two are for paraprofessionals, and of that number, twenty-four of those are new positions that were newly created this year. So just a little overview of what is there so far.
Thank you, Deb, for the summary. Any questions or comments? Thank you. Unfinished Business, twenty-three dash nine twenty-one. Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see any hands.
This is just related to the conferences that were approved on this agenda. We have several, I believe there's seven, conferences approved. AP Spanish Literature and Culture, it's an online workshop. Elementary IEP Team Leader Community of Practice. The USDA Food Bank Tour. The DESI History and Social Studies Leaders Network. The DESI Science and Teacher Leaders Network, of which two staff will be participating in that. The DESI Math Leaders Network and the Grant Management USA all have one staff member participating, except, as I stated, the DESI Science and Tech Leaders Network.
All set?
That's it. Thank you.
Tim Wagner.
This was not a, I thought we'd moved on from the personnel report after that. I was going to make a motion to take twenty-three dash nine dash twenty-nine out of order.
So we have a motion to take twenty-three dash nine? Any discussion? Sarah will take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Dought?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries 23-9-29.
Resolution to petition the Commonwealth to expand the MassReconnect subsidized higher education program.
Tim Wagner.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a program, for the benefit of the members, I'm going to give a little background. This was a program that was started by Governor Moore Healy's administration in the fiscal year 2024 budget for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. It's funded in an amount of $20 million. And it allows the students who meet the following criteria to attend community colleges in Massachusetts for free. Students who are over 25 years of age, residents of the Commonwealth for, I believe, a year or more. Anybody who does not have or has not obtained a full bachelor's or associate's degree. And the requirement that any students who are enrolling live in the Commonwealth for the duration of the time in which they're enrolled in a community college. I think that this is a great program. It's a great first step toward equity in higher education. As we all know, as NASA data shows us, a college degree is increasingly more necessary in an ever more complex world. And as we deal with more and more complex jobs and topics, studies show that people with even an associate's degree make substantially higher wages than those with just a high school degree. In short, higher education is a gateway to infinite possibility, to what many like to call the American dream. I myself, through the connections that I have made at Springfield Technical Community College over the course of completing my own associate's degree, I was able to obtain an internship in the big YIT department, which has since turned into a full-time job, which I will be starting in the second week of October, 40 hours a week, making about 50 grand a year, give or take. And Mr. Gerard, whose son graduated, my cousin Jake, from Springfield Technical Community College, who will actually be working right across the street from me, at EverSource as an electrical engineer. Even an associate's degree can go a long way. And I think that it's simply unfair to exclude a generation, my generation, Gen Z, from this program when costs of higher education have never been higher. I think that it's wrong to exclude us after having just went through a global pandemic and our learning has been setback by several years. I think that more can be done with the amount of savings that we have and with the amount of revenue that we take in at the state level to fund this program and make it more accessible to all high school graduates. And so this resolution, Mayor, which if I could read into the record in just a minute, this resolution is intended to petition the governor, our state lawmakers, and other area school committees, who, if we've read Mass Live, have indicated that they would be willing to support and that the governor's office would be willing to entertain a discussion around expanding this program. So I'll go ahead and if the chair will permit, read this resolution into the record?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. Whereas the MassReconnect program was established by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts to help residents who meet certain requirements are under age 25 and older to obtain college degrees from public community college. And whereas the COVID-19 pandemic has caused a substantial learning gap and a learning and mental health crisis in Gen Z and Gen Alpha students. And whereas the student debt crisis, increased cost of higher education, inflation, and stagnant wages have discouraged recent high school graduates from obtaining a post-secondary education in part or in whole. And whereas it is increasingly necessary to have a college degree to be competitive in the 21st century workforce. And whereas the Commonwealth of Massachusetts believes that all citizens have a right and therefore should have equal access to education and the opportunities and advantages that it provides. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chickapi School Committee does the following. Petitions the General Court of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Office of the Governor to expand the MassReconnect program so that it is available to all high school graduates in the Commonwealth. Two, delivers this resolution to the Springfield, Holyoke, Westfield, and Pittsfield School Committees and humbly request that they adopt it. And three, moves that the chair be authorized to sign this resolution and present it to Chickapi State Legislative Delegation, the Office of the Governor, and the aforementioned school committees for their consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any discussion? Don Lamont.
Yes, I've got a post to it, but my concern comes down to, right now, there's 20 million dedicated to this. If you give it to every high school student, how much is that going to increase? Is it going to increase 20, 30, 40, 50? Let me finish. So I'm not opposed to it, but there is some cost here. And we don't even fund all our local K through 12 schools. There are several school districts that are laying people off. We're lucky this next couple of years. But we weren't so lucky the last 10, 15 years, where we were pink-slipping teachers and stuff. So that's my concern, that there's only a limited number of money that's in a budget at some point. And, you know, you've got to keep that as a realistic goal. And I've heard you say that, you know, it's not fair to your generation. Well, Tim, when I was your age, I had the same issues. I had to pay for my college, too. And it took me 20 years to go through college. So I understand what you're saying, but, you know, this is apple pie. It's going to sound good to everybody, but there is a cost. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam Shumsky.
Thank you. So while I do believe that better education does give you better opportunities in life, like Don said, I do have some questions regarding the information on the cost of how many students would be impacted, the increased costs that are not projected here, and would space be a problem because community colleges are only capable of holding so many students? And I just feel like we need more information to make an informed vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Tim, one moment, everyone for first time. Tim, second time.
Thank you, Mayor. In response to comments made by Mr. Lamont, it's estimated that 2 million Commonwealth residents will be able to take advantage of this program with just an estimated $20 million. And I think that that's a substantial amount, that's a fourth of the Commonwealth's population of 8 million residents, who would be able to take advantage of something like this. And in a budget of over $50 billion, I think that the Commonwealth could find just a little bit more money to offer this program to more people, which not everybody will take advantage of, but which would benefit a substantial number of people in gateway cities like Chickapi. And Mr. Shumsky, with regards to space at the community colleges, officials from Holyoke Community College and Springfield Technical Community College have endorsed the plan. And STIC President John Cook has said he would gladly accept more students and that they are prepared to take more, that they would gladly endorse this plan along with us. And I think that the first step in getting the ball rolling on something like this, of course specifics can be worked out if legislation or supplemental budget were to be filed, then I'm sure that this school committee, being the one that got the ball rolling on this, would inevitably be part of that discussion. And I think it's important that if this is going to happen at all, that we take the first step and start building a coalition of school committees around this. Because I know that, you know, things have been done a certain way for a certain amount of time, and I get it. I get that everybody's had some hardships in life. I get that people are just used to things being a certain way. But we would not be the first state to offer free community college, not remotely. There's several states in the U.S. offer it already. And the government exists to improve the quality of life for its residents. That is its sole purpose. They already have the framework in place. It's just a matter of expanding it.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Sandy has a question. Sandra Perret.
Beginning ones, higher education and a community college is certainly a great place to start. And it does encourage young men and women to continue their education to a bachelor's degree from that associate's degree. And I know of several people who, before going to get their bachelor's, did start off in a community college because of the cost savings for them. But not everyone is in a position where the cost of a community college is something that a lot of families can do. So certainly, we all want to assist people in bettering themselves and educating themselves. And I certainly think I would support this because we're helping people get ahead in life.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Is there any other motions?
Move that we adopt the policy and adhere to points 1 through 3, which I've made and outlined in the resolution.
So we have a motion to adopt this resolution to petition the Commonwealth. On the motion. Sam Shumsky.
I just have a question regarding, is there a way we can discuss this further in a subcommittee? I don't think this falls under any subcommittee, but I wanted to ask the question.
Yes, there is, but we have a motion on the floor to adopt. So...
Okay.
So the motion on the floor right now is to adopt?
Can I put motion to put in subcommittee for further?
Motion to table.
Motion to table, I should say?
Motion to postpone?
Yes.
So now we have a motion to postpone till next meeting?
Next meeting, yes.
So we have a motion to postpone to next meeting. Any comment on the postponing? Tim Wagner.
What information is Mr. Shumsky hoping to gain in the interim? If I may ask, what would be the purpose of a postponement?
I would just like to look for more personal research into the matter.
Of course, thank you.
So we have a motion to postpone. Any further discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
No.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
No.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
No.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eight yes, three no.
Motion carries. We'll move to 23-9-21.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1459, Custodial Unit, and Chickapi School Committee be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Don, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve if it's on the agenda.
We have a motion to approve. Any discussion? I assume that the unions have ratified the contracts?
I can't.
Just a point of information, why are they on the agenda? Just for clarity, items 21, 22, and 23 and 24 are memorandums of agreement that have not been ratified by the union. And I think it would be in our best interest to postpone again. And I think the postponement should be until we hear from the union, rather than to the next meeting, is a recommendation from chair. Don, can we get a motion?
I'll make that motion, to postpone until we hear from the union or the next meeting or either whatever comes first.
Can you do all of them or do you have to take them separately?
Take them separately. And we'll take a roll call. Any questions on the first one? Comments? So we have a motion to postpone until we hear from the union. And Don, would it be appropriate to say, in a timely manner, that we'd be able to comply with open meeting law to get on our next agenda?
Yes.
Rather than next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. So Sarah will take a roll call. The motion is to postpone.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries 23-9-22.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1459, school nurses, and Chickapi School Committee be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Grace, can I get a motion?
A motion to postpone to a timely manner when we hear from the union.
Union. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, Sarah.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries 23-9-23.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1459, Technical Unit, and Chickapi School Committee be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Sam, can I get a motion?
Motion to postpone until union is ready.
Motion to postpone until we hear from the union. Any discussion? We'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries 23-9-24.
Move that the memorandum of agreement between United Food and Commercial Workers Union, Local 1459, school cafeteria workers, and Chickapi School Committee be approved and the chairperson be authorized to sign.
Chuck, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
We would prefer that you postpone. We have not heard from the union yet. So we get a motion to postpone?
Postpone.
We have a motion to postpone. Any discussion? So for clarity, I have a motion to postpone until we hear from the union on ratification from their end of the contract. Sarah will take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries. New business 23-9-25.
Move that the transfer of funds totaling $298,920 be approved.
Doug Gerard, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Any discussion? Superintendent, just a point of information, could you give us an explanation? Yep. Thank you.
So there's a letter in the packet, the transfer of funds to support the actual amount that's been budgeted for the psychological salaries. So this is under the special ed department. So there's a transfer of the funds from, let me back up. There is a transfer of the funds from one account to another to support these salaries that we are contracting with the services outside of our school district. More specifically, and I know that Mr. Meyeraki's in the audience, so that if there needs to be more explanation, I can actually call him up to the mic to speak to it.
Any further discussion or questions about the transfer? See, now we'll take a roll call.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcelo?
Yes.
Mr. Doubt?[1704.80]
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries, 23-926.
Move that the bills warrant S090823 totaling $593,186.75 be approved.
Sandra, can I get a motion?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve. Sam, could you read the warrants into the record, please?
Yes. So I will read the total of the two warrants, and we will act upon each individually. For athletics, $13,127. Food services, $93,679. General expenses, $697,020. Grants, $334,364. Maintenance, $199,205. Special education, $19,028. Student activities, $7,522. Telecommunications, $358. For a total of $1,364,305.
Thank you. Any discussion on the first warrant? We'll be voting on them individually. That's S090823 totaling $593,186.75. Sarah, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth? Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries, 23-927.
Move that the bills warrant S091523 totaling $771,119.4 be approved.
Tim Wagner.
A motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Any discussion on the second warrant? Sarah, can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?
Yes.
Mr. Shumsky?
Yes.
Mr. Lamoth?
Yes.
Mr. Gerard?
Yes.
Mrs. Loebz?
Yes.
Mr. Zatella?
Yes.
Eleven yes.
Motion carries, 23-928.
Student dress code policy, J19, topic requested by Ms. Zatella Loebz.
Vice Chair Susan Zatella Loebz, you have the floor.
Thank you, everyone, especially Mr. Wagner, for giving me the opportunity to speak on behalf of all our Chicopee citizens this evening concerning our Chicopee Public Schools dress code policy. I thank Dr. Ware in particular, who I'm appealing to through this discussion. I see that one of your focus is on listening and learning, so I appreciate that. I'd like to read an email that I sent out to Dr. Ware, our mayor as chairperson, and the four principals, our two principals that are, I missed the academy, our two principals at Chicopee High and Chicopee Comp, and also our two middle schools, Dupont and Bellamy Middle School. Mr. Wagner requested that I read the email that I wrote to the six people that I just mentioned, and I did forward it to Mr. Wagner because he had asked me what I had in mind when I requested that we discuss our dress code policy a couple of weeks ago and put it on the agenda. Hello, in all the years I have been a school committee member, I have been approached many, many times by community members and staff members about the way that our students dress when attending school. They are alarmed and disgusted, especially by our girls who show cleavage and who wear shorts and skirts way too short. They even have their stomachs showing. I see it for myself when I visit the schools. I wonder what the heck is going on. It should be obvious to all of you why we are concerned and want something done about it. I am doing my job as an elected representative and calling it to your attention as principals in your buildings. Our hope and expectations is that our policy will be enforced with a lot more conviction. When I speak at the school committee meeting tomorrow evening, this evening, I may refer to Bellamy School. Two hardworking staff members that we are so fortunate to have have approached me to complain about what they see every day. It is difficult to listen to. I can hardly believe what I am hearing. Something needs to be done. Our dress code policy says that students cannot be disciplined or removed from class for not obeying. What is done about a young girl dressed inappropriately? Why have a policy if it is not being enforced? Perhaps the policy is not specific enough. Thank you for your attention to this matter. It may not be important to all school committee members, but it is important to me and the people I represent. Again, that's my job, and I need to do it well. I would like to add that I, I must add that I spoke of two women, me also, and we're worried about these young girls who are coming to school dressed inappropriately. We are sure it is hurting them and those around them, especially our boys who are there at school to learn academically. When speaking on this topic, I think of words like dignity, presentation, discipline, confidence, accomplishment, and respect. Mrs. Perret just mentioned that she is all for people bettering themselves, and this is one way. Again, Superintendent, you're new at the helm, and I'm asking you to, for us to have further discussion on this topic. And perhaps I can start by referring it to a subcommittee, if that's what's recommended.
So we have a motion to refer the student dress code policy, J19, to subcommittee. Which one would, would be most appropriate?
Policy.
Policy.
Sarah was kind enough to include the policy in our current policy. And again, I was alarmed by it. I'd like to see it reviewed, please.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Tim Wagner.
Of course. And Mayor, I'd be happy as the Chair of the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee, which took this up in this term of office, actually, at the behest of a female student who came to this school committee and spoke very eloquently about how she feels that the female students are oftentimes singled out, and how that she felt the policy, for how specific it was. I'm sorry, is that, is that better? Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm sorry again. As the Chair of the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee, we had the pleasure of taking this up, I believe, starting in February and March of 2022, at the behest of a female student who came and spoke very eloquently before the, the school committee here, saying that she felt oftentimes singled out, how she and other female students felt very singled out by policies that were very restrictive and not with the times, and that were very sexist. And that oftentimes I didn't feel comfortable with the oftentimes male teachers who were the ones having to write them up for dress code violations. So in March of 2022, this was referred to the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee, where we worked very diligently with a fantastic group of students to reform this dress code policy. It was referred out of Subcommittee in June, placed on the July agenda. I believe I have the minutes for which right here, one of my documents. Terribly sorry, I should have had those prepared. Here we go. It was on our agenda for July 20th of 2022. It was item number... Yes, here it was. 22-7-19. Motion made by Mr. Wagner to approve the second reading of the following policies as recommended by the Policy and Human Resources Subcommittee. A, school committee organizational meeting. B, subcommittees of the school committee. C, teaching about controversial issues and speakers. D, student dress code policy. A motion, which was unanimously approved by all the members present and which requires a two-thirds majority. For additional context, only eight members of the 12 total school committee members were present at this meeting. The roll call was as follows. Mayor View, yes. Mr. Wagner, yes. Mr. Barcello, Mr. DePaola, Mrs. Perret, and Mrs. Schofield were absent. Mrs. Schofield, by the way, which who voted to refer this current policy out of Subcommittee onto the floor. Mr. Shumsky, yes. Mr. Lamoth, yes. Mr. Gerard, yes. Mr. Bernard, yes. Mrs. Zatella, yes. Mrs. Loebz, yes. It was, it was approved unanimously by the eight members present and could have been defeated by a single no vote as per our operating procedures, which require two-thirds majority. And now we worked very hard with a group of students, administrators, and community members to implement this new dress code policy, which we felt was very fair and which we felt would not take time away from learning, which, as we know now, is more important than ever, having come out of the COVID-19 pandemic. We felt that this was the best course forward. All the members of that meeting approved the policy unanimously. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other discussion? We have a motion. Sandy. Sandra Perret.
Just, you know, in terms of, you know, our dress code, I, it, do... I guess the complaints that, that you received, do people, do students, do they understand what the intent was of the dress code? And I, I'm looking at it again, and I know it says clothing should include a top, shirt, blouse, sweater, tank, bottom, pants, shorts, skirt, dress, footwear, suggested footwear should be worn in all school buildings. There's a general concept, and I was on a, on a, a dress code committee at one point in time, and we had allowed professionals to wear shorts. And I think my vision of shorts was a walking short that went to the knee with a jacket. And I was thinking of, you know, a particular individual who wore this to work. And when we implemented the dress code for professionals, physical therapists, occupational therapists, nurses, people were coming into work with short shorts, which didn't hit me as being a professional type attire. And I guess what I'm trying to say is maybe the students are not understanding what our expectation is of them. And maybe we need to provide that, that simply reading something may not give them our general thought of how the student should be presenting at school. Just a statement.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Yeah, Vice Chair.
I made a mistake. I shouldn't have voted for that policy. So that's why I would like to revisit it, please.
So we have a motion to send the student dress code policy to the Policy Subcommittee. Any further discussion? Don?
Yes, I have no problem sending it to the Subcommittee. Yes, I did vote for it. Is the sticking point the lack of discipline? Is, is that what I'm hearing? Or is it just the, the clothing that's, they're wearing doesn't meet the dress, dress code? Or is it that the dress, the policy isn't explicit enough? That's what I'm trying to understand. I guess that would be to you, Sue, that I'm asking.
It's a question through the Chair to the Vice Chair.
Yes.
Vice Chair, do you want to respond, or do you want to move the question?
Or do you want to put it in Subcommittee? You can ask it in Subcommittee, I guess.
We have a motion to send to Subcommittee. We'll take a roll call. Sure. The Vice Chair.
When I was driving to work this morning on Grattan Street, I saw a young man or a boy standing by a bus stop with his pants down to here. Waiting to get on the bus and go to school. It was not, not a good thing for me to see.
Thank you. Any other comments? Grace?
So I was in that committee, the Subcommittee, where we talked extensively about this dress code policy. And part of the dress code does say that in the, your pants need to cover. You know, when you sit and stand, pants need to be covered, parts of your body, that kind of thing. So I can't see sending it to Subcommittee because we spend a lot of time discussing every situation. So I, I think that it's more of an, I agree with Ms. Perret. It's more of an understanding of expectation of what the students perceive the dress code to be as opposed to, like, the enforcement of it.
Also? Tim Wagner, second time.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'd also just like to, to point out that this is really more of a topic that we would have to call in the building administrators for. Right? Because as, as Ms. Schofield pointed out, we spent a lot of time on this. A lot of students put in, and, and school committee members and administrators put in a lot of work. And to suggest that students are just running around, showing off every part of their body imaginable, or flagrantly, or flagrantly violating the dress code in, in large numbers. And it certainly does happen, but to act as though there's nobody trying to enforce it, when I know that there are. I know that there are several staff members and administrators doing their very best to enforce it. I think that this would best be settled if we were to call them in to our next meeting, if we were to have them answer these questions here. And, and I, I just think that there is a better use of time, and there are better things that we could focus on. As, as mentioned during your entry plan, we're very concerned about the state of our buildings, things of that nature. After spending the better part of a year on this, I think the topic has been discussed to death. So I'm, I'm wholeheartedly against sending it to Subcommittee.
We have a motion to send to Subcommittee. Sam Shumsky.
Yes, I just wanted to ask the Superintendent what his thoughts on this were as a Superintendent, and with what you're hearing from administrators. I don't know if, I know you probably don't have that information, but I was just kind of curious.
Yeah, I, I can't say that I've heard anything about the dress code from the administrators. If, if I, I definitely can speak with them, and I can definitely get their feedback about what they're doing or how things are going in the schools. That's, that can be done, but I can't, I don't have any reports, unfortunately, right now to speak to what, what their thoughts or opinions are about the dress code. But I can follow up.
Okay, thank you. Vice Chair.
Just want to repeat a couple of sentences in my email. Our hope and expectation is that our policy will be enforced with a lot more conviction. It may not be important to all school committee members, but it is important to me and the people I represent. And again, I work out in the public. People come to me and say these things to me, and I need to follow through with them because that's my job.
Thank you. Don?
Yes, Sue, would it be worthwhile to give the Superintendent a little bit of time to see if he can do something with this before we reinvent the wheel?
Yes, please.
So would you hold back your motion at this time and? Okay, thank you.
So you're going to, just a point of order, you're rescinding your motion? So for a discussion with no motion.
Thank you.
Superintendent, we'll do a little investigating on behalf of the dress code policy and enforcement.
Okay, so I'm looking into the enforcement of the dress code policy, more specifically at the middle school and high schools, correct? Okay. I just want to make sure, I, I want to make sure I do it due diligence. So I will definitely do that.
Thank you. Any other discussion? That concludes our regular meeting. We got a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn. Roll call, please.
Mayor View?
Yes.
Mr. Wagner? Mr. Barcello?
Yes.
Mr. Douth?
Yes.
Mrs. Perret?
Yes.
Mrs. Schofield?[1767.83]